...at five o'clock, so if you'll join me with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to continue to say that correctly while the rest of you say it like the third grade until you all catch up. Let me get the mic on here. At this time, I'll call the April 15 meeting of the Marion City Council to order. Some procedural things I want to address real quickly before we get going, and I'll probably continue to do this as we go forward. Just some rules of procedure. As most of you know, we're recording this meeting, and it's available on Vibe Cable TV throughout Marion County on Tuesdays at seven. It's also available on demand by going to the city's website, clicking on the red YouTube button up at the top of the page by the search bar. Or you can go to YouTube itself, type in MCTV 20 Live, that's M-C-T-V, two zero L-I-V-E, and search for City Council. So, we're encouraging people to watch these, and we've been encouraged by the number of people that are watching them. We want the public to be able to see and hear our meetings, and for that reason, if you wish to ask a question or make a statement, you should do it during either the public comments section, which is for comment about things that are on the agenda that night, or the public forum section at the end of the meeting. Don't just yell something out or speak out from the gallery. It just causes disorder, it's unfair to others who are trying to listen. When it's a, it is an appropriate time to speak, you need to come up to the microphone at the speaker's table, use the microphone. Otherwise, we may be able to hear you, but people that are watching online won't be able to. I am sorry if this is inconvenient to some of you, but some level of formality is necessary to have a productive meeting, and we're happy to hear your comments, we'd just like others to hear them too. And other than, please silence your phones if you have them. This is off. Okay, we will move into the agenda. First up is the approval of the agenda as presented. Anyone have any desire to modify the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of consenting to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Five zero, motion passes. With regard to the minutes from the April 1 council meeting, you should all have a, a copy was sent out to you with your packet by email, and then a revised pack, or not packet, a revised copy of the minutes was prepared today. Has everyone had a chance to look at their revisions and what you got before? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minute.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing done? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, the first recommendation, there's a spell, it's, it's just a word swap or a letter swap there. We can, it says recom- menation.
Zach, I'm from southeast Kansas, and that's where we spelled it. Right, fair enough. Okay, we do have a, anyone, any objection to the spelling change on recommendation in the fourth line of the 1509 floodplain ordinance section? All right, we'll just consider that to be, make a spelling change, please. With that, all in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Five zero, minutes are approved. Approval of warrants and the amount of seventy-six thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and eight cents. Again, those who are in your packet, any discussion or questions about the warrants?
There's one I wanted to pull out and had a question on, on page 10 of the council payable. To that. Robinson Trucking, there's different line items there, and a few of them for computer software. I'm assuming that was computer software on a truck to be spreading salt or spreading some sort of aggregate?
No, it's just for rock, I don't know why it says computer software, I'll have to check with Sandy and see what that means.
Okay. That was my only question on that.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yep.
All right, is there a motion to approve the warrants?
I move we approve warrants.
And yes, I am going through these one by one. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Five zero, motion approved. And approval of payroll, the amount of thirty-five thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Any questions about that? No questions or concerns? Okay.
I move we approve it.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, five zero. And we'll move on, the matters on today on the agenda, you can see them, but we have some appointments of city officials coming up, library board reappointments. The resolution 2403 that you see on there has to do with the moderate income housing project over on the east side of town on Cobal Street. Code enforcement agreement that deals with a agreement we have with Harrington with regard to Mr. Masters' employment between the two cities. Number 10, pay adjustments that Mr. McInerney will address, has to do with employee raises. Number 11, purchasing limit policy has to do with what we've discussed previously about what amount should be, the amount above which a matter has to be brought before the council before a purchase can be made. Number 12 has to do with a, we had a typo in the ordinance last week and that's dealing with that last meeting. Chingawasa Days has to do with the selling of beer in the park, and then Mr. Masters will be talking about the 203 Miller Street that we've dealt with before. So, if you wish to make comment about any of those items, this is your opportunity. No one? Okay, thank you. We'll go then to number six. We have those that are listed, there's city clerk, assistant city clerk, and that's the city clerk, obviously Janet Robinson, assistant city clerk, and Betty Mockovic. I just said Betty, and now my mind went blank.
Becky.
Becky, yeah, I knew it wasn't Betty. Becky Mockovic, city treasurer is Becky Mockovic, Brian Bina, city treasurer, municipal judge Randy Pancratz. The clerk of the court is Sandy, and how do you, I don't know how to pronounce her last.
Shealy.
Shealy, Sandy Shealy. And the fire chief is Mr. Kilo, Kello, and Chris Kello, I think.
Yep.
I don't have chief of police on there because these are all people that are currently already serving and that have indicated a desire to continue serving in those roles. We will put this on the agenda for action at the next meeting, but it would be my intent to, at this time, to offer all of them to the council as my appointments for those particular positions. With regard to chief of police, I'm going to ask Zach to continue as interim, and Mark and I have been talking, and I think we need to probably talk at the appropriate time, maybe even tonight, but I think it's time that we start advertising and get that position filled on a permanent basis. So, there's really nothing to do there, other than I wanted to make you all aware that that'll be on for a vote in two weeks, and if anybody has any questions at this time, go ahead.
Did you say assistant city clerk and city treasurer both Becky? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm not sure why that is, but that's the way.
I was thinking that's, okay, thank you.
That's not a change.
Right, right.
Okay, number seven is library board reappointments. I might mention, by the way, I don't, this is not on the agenda right now, but I think going forward probably will be in some form. What we just talked about was a discussion item, the library board reappointments. There are some things that are just perfunctory, and my idea about putting things on, and then we'll talk about it, and two weeks later, we'll vote on it. I mean, I still think that's a good idea, we just have to figure out what it applies to and what it doesn't. And perfunctory matters, they're just a matter, of course. Reappointing two good people in the community to the library board is not something that in my mind needs to be held over for two weeks. So, at this time, I would intend to reappoint Shannon Cooper and Bruce Winkler to the Marion City Library Board. Any discussion on that? Okay, I'll make that then my motion, if I could get a second.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, is there any discussion? No, all right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Five zero vote, the ayes have it. And Mark, we'll go to you for number eight.
Sure, we're going to ask you to approve resolution 2403, which provide for the city's support of the application to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation by Kristen Wee Wee and Langrillity. As you know, they're working on four single-family homes on Cobal Street. This would give them the authority to apply and seek up to, a little over a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in tax credits. It doesn't come through the city, they'll work directly with Housing Resource Corporation, but they just need our support of their application, so we recommend your approval.
Any comments or questions for Mark?
I guess, one, one comment, I mean, the previous developer that we had, just for everyone's information, the previous developer also applied for these tax credits and received them as well, so, just as a little bit of extra information.
And I might note, if you, if you apply on the modern income housing grant, then the city would be the administrator of that grant, just maybe note the difference, because I anticipate you may do that in the future, and some people apply for both.
I was kind of monitoring, the, we left last meeting and empowered Mark to do whatever he needed to do to try to cooperate with Kristen, and there were back and forth between them. And I was really pleased, because at one point, she was asking for some information, and I sent Mark an email and said, you know, I, you know, I've got some time I can help work on this or whatever, and he said Margot's already done it. So, I assume that somebody asked Margot, she's kind of pushy, so I never know for sure. But I was just really pleased that we were able to get Kristen everything she needed, and I think that went real smooth.
There was a bunch of questions, I didn't know the people to contact, and Margaret did, and she took care of it in short order.
Okay, do, can I get a resolution, or you have a motion with regard to resolution 2408?
Twenty-four oh three.
Yes.
It is a three, I'm old and it's far away.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2403.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Five zero vote in favor. Mark, back to you on nine, this is a discussion item, code enforcement agreement.
Sure. In June of twenty, June of nineteen, or 2022, the city of Harrington and Marion entered into an agreement to share an inspector's services. In that case, if James, he down here a day and a half to two days a week, he's a full-time employee of Harrington, that we reimburse him a certain amount to, for his services. I was, been in contact with the team manager of Harrington, they like to provide notice that they would like to have him back there full-time, and there's a hundred eighty-day notice to cancel of the agreement. They're asking to move that up to sixty days or so, just because they, they need him up there. So, I did, this is their request.
The city attorney contacted me a while back and made me aware that Harrington had given notice that they'd like to terminate, but they like to do it quicker than a hundred eighty days, so, I mean, I personally, I don't think it helps anybody for us to just make things difficult for Harrington, but we also need to protect ourselves, so. I, per, I, my thought when, when I was contacted about it was that ninety days was probably enough, but, had Mark mentioned sixty?
Well, he, yeah, sixty to ninety, because he would, if you count it from when he first contacted, he, we talked in March.
Oh, okay.
So, but I think he'd be at, had prior contact before I got.
Then ninety would be better, in my opinion, but I don't have a real strong feeling, does somebody else feel differently?
Ninety was kind of what had initially come to my head too, just gives us a little time to try and get our ducks in a row as far as what we want to do for code enforcement. I think having code enforcement and having James around here has been a huge asset. I've seen a big change in town in general since James has been here, so I, I think it's something that we need to take a look at, and by, with ninety days, it gives us a little more time to react to that.
I continue to have people comment about still outdated properties and the desire to make sure that the city doesn't let it grow, let that issue grow. I think that we ought to give some thought, whenever we do, to whether we want to make this a permanent, a full-time position. And if we were to do that, I think the only logical way to do it would have, be to have it also take on the responsibilities of the zoning board, the zoning officer and the officer for the keeping things clean.
Enforcement.
Yeah, code enforcement. So, I, I'm going to, just to get it started, I'm going to make a motion, or you didn't move, or I'll make a motion that we agree the ninety days notice, which will probably give us about, I don't know, seventy-five or sixty to move on doing something.
That's what I was going to ask, when did the ninety days start, or has it?
I, I don't have that, Brian has, and actually, I don't know that Brian got, I did not get the impression that Brian was given an official, we're giving our notice, I think they were giving him a heads up that they were going to give the notice, so.
Gotcha.
I think the date that Mark got it is the.
It was at, I want to say March 11th, 15th, or some via email.
Okay.
And then we had lunch a few weeks later to talk about it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, other, other thoughts? Okay, all in favor of making the notice requirement ninety days, knowing that, that basically is going to give us around sixty to start moving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Five zero vote in favor. Before we move on, since we're talking, well, I'll tell you what, we'll, Mark, let's bring this back up when we get down to your part of the.
Get to code enforcement?
Yeah, yeah, what we're going to do. Back to, this is the Mark McInerney section of the show. Number 10 is you, Mark.
In the 24 budget, there's a five percent pay adjustment for the city employees. I think last year, they did it across the board. I think that worked well, as I understand it, for the most part, probably recommend to do that again, but there could be, out of the 24, 25 employees, there could be some that, there were some qualifications, like if you got hired yesterday, you probably wouldn't qualify, or if you have a previous, some type of arrangement. I think some of our departments have debts. So again, I'll, we'll make that recommendation to get the ball going.
I don't, this is a discussion item, and I thought we would vote on it next meeting, but Mark had told me that he felt like at this point. We've had a discussion about doing a merit system, and, I mean, I think a merit system is, can be good if it's done right, but you have to make sure you've got some way of documenting why this person is an A-plus employee and this other person is a C-plus, and you've got to have that be a objective kind of a system that one could go back and look at to make sure that we don't have favoritism or any of that sort of thing. And a lot of times, it's not even matter having favoritism, it's being able to show that when somebody accuses you of favoritism, that here's why this is the way it really is. So, I would love to see us at least take a hard look at doing something like that for, for the upcoming, next, for next year, but at this point, I'm going to recommend, unless something changes in the next two weeks, that we just follow Mark's recommendation, so be aware of that.
So, like employee evaluations, would that come from department head, or would that fall under city administrator?
They would come from department head, and then it would go to city administrator.
Gotcha.
Have we done that before?
They have.
Yeah, and some say, if you had five percent, some do three percent merit, or four, three and a half, one and a half percent cost of living, there's all kinds of ways, and we're also looking at your pay range to get them all made updated, make sure they're consistent.
And that five percent's taken into consideration, cost of living adjustment, that's all umbrella, we're not separating it out, it's just considering it all.
This, yeah, this year.
Can I go? Okay. We will move on then to number 12, the amended floodplain ordinance. And Janet, you want to explain that?
Yeah, in one place, the ordinance was wrong, it had the wrong number of where it was repealed, it should have been the same, the number previously. And then, I was unaware that last time this was approved, several years ago, there was two different ordinances for that floodplain. Flood, plain, so, plain, what?
Floodplain.
Spit it out.
So, I had to go back in and list them both instead of just the one, so everything would be correct.
Is that what's on section one there, the two different numbers?
Yeah, the fourteen, okay.
So, really doing nothing different than what we already approved, other than.
Right, it's just a change, it's just correcting.
Yeah. Approving the cleaned-up version.
Yes.
So, anyone, I assume no one's changed their mind on approving the floodplain plan? All right, give me a motion, please.
I move except the revised floodplain plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have to say floodplain plan if you make it.
It's plain floodplain.
Did I get a second?
Yeah, I got a second, yeah.
You did, okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye. Opposed, nay. Five zero vote in favor. And then Janet, we'll go to you for number 13.
And that's just the Chingawasa Beer Garden ordinance that needs to be published in the paper and with the approval.
Now, this, I'm going to say this, if you think I'm wrong, you say it, but it's really having to do with what we did last meeting. This is the, you've done it every year since they've had the Beer Garden to basically exempt that period of time and that space from the general prohibition on alcohol in the park.
Yes.
Any questions for Janet, or?
What's, so what is ordinance 1502, then, that we're repealing with this?
That was the one that was passed last year with different names.
Okay, okay, perfect.
I'll, I'll move that we pass. Got to get back up to it, I can move quicker on paper than I can on this. Ordinance 1510, as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, five zero. And that takes us to number 14, the 202 Miller Street property, and I know Mr. Wilson's here. Mr. Wilson, well, why don't you come up, Mr. Masters, and then we'll, if Mr. Wilson needs to. Yeah, you might.
Either one.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, if at some point you want to talk, just grab that microphone over there and.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Sure.
202 Miller Street is moving along. Let's see here, so, on, let's see stairs in over here, as you can see, I got some video also, or photos up here. I wasn't sure I was going to be able to get the photos up here, so I made copies for everyone.
I'm going to stop you for a second. I had talked to the, I, well, I, my understanding was when we got these, that Lloyd, we were going to be able to, like in this situation, have the information here. I know you don't now, but were you aware of that? Okay, well, that was kind of part of the point of doing this, is so that we would be able to look here and not have to all turn around and do this. So, for future reference, jump on Lloyd and tell him, because he told me we could do it.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So, in the photos, you can see that there's a set of stairs there now, that, you can see that there's a handrail also. There's going to be, need to be a second handrail, since it's over thirty inches from grade to the first platform, per building code. So, he'll need to add a second handrail. I spoke with Mr. Wilson today, he does have that on order. The last step right here was an inch over the tolerance of the rest of the stairs, which causes a stumbling issue. He said he would fill that in with some dirt right there, bring this grade up to where it's the same height for all the set of stairs coming down, so there's no tripping hazard at the bottom. So, those, those are the items on the stairs right now, to get those there cleared and out of the way. So, on the back here, it's been, you know, it's been my concern about this, this, this piece right up here, not being supported, the old stairway. It's still there. Mr. Wilson has showed me something about this house that, you know, there is these, what I, I used to call these cripples in construction. Let's see, the very first picture here, this is the front of the house right here.
You called them what?
I always call them cripples, but they're actually some type of support for the roof line when it comes out. I don't know the actual name of it. It was way the houses were designed back, back a long time ago, they don't use this system anymore, but it would basically would support the roof line, and it would give it a decorative look at the same time. On the back of the house, there is the same thing, and he showed me up underneath this section right here, there is still an existing one still right over here. Now, whether the others are still up along here, I'm not sure of. So, he has braced this with some four-by-fours right here, as you can see, that are supporting this section right here. I believe it to be sufficient, but I would like to know more about if the other rest of the supports are still up there that were holding that roof line. Okay? So, that there is still kind of, we still need some, to address that right there, that step, that part right there, get a better look up underneath there, of what might be up underneath here to support that. Other than that, there's just some debris in the yard still, construction debris. There's rocks and bricks up underneath here, and there's some back here in the back of the yard also. That's about it. There's some stuff back here in the backyard from the construction of this here project, and there's still some stuff around the front edge of the house, running along in here, some old stairs and debris laying there. Any questions?
So, James, what, what, I guess what I'm looking from for you, from you is a recommendation, do we say he's ninety-five percent there, and, and you know he'll get the rest done? Or do we say, okay, we're going to put this on one more time and look at it in a month or something?
I'd say that, you know, if he doesn't complete it, I can bring it back.
Okay.
Okay. I'm, I'm trusting that Donald will finish this up, you know, and I'll get a look at up, see how much support really is up underneath there still, because I looked at it really close. I was there in the backyard today for the first time to actually look at that right there. That structure that's on the back is some two-by-fours and some cedar siding, that's it, you know, there's not much weight right there.
When I, when I remove those stairs, where the.
Don, don, microphone. You're gonna have to...
Turn that on.
Yeah, you'll look on there, you'll see it says mute, hold the mute button down, and it will do the opposite of muting. Did a green light come on? You're good.
Okay, um, when I remove those, what I did, or when I removed the steps, what I actually did is that, that is literally just a sheet of, uh, half inch plywood and two by fours up there, so I'll go up there and I'll take that plywood from the top and bottom, up under there, um...
I'm not hearing it come through, I hear it buzzing.
Yeah, okay, but, okay, but I, I made it. Uh, I can remove the plywood, and you can probably be able to see it from where we had discussed on the other side of the fence. You ought to be able to look up in there and see that the other two supports, all the way through if I remove that plywood.
If those two supports are there, and these four by fours are holding, just maybe some paint on it, you know?
Well, I planned on getting those, uh, at least, uh, Thompson water sealed before we got to it, but, uh, I was more worried about the steps. But, yeah, we'll definitely get some paint thrown up there, too.
Thank you. Uh, a month?
Yes.
James, um, this is not really, I mean, it's appropriate with, or it relates to Mr. Wilson, but just in general. I think I brought this up last meeting. Is, in your line of work, if you, uh, you know, bring an issue up and, and someone's given, uh, directions on things they need to improve, uh, is there a document they get when, yeah, you're up to code?
Um, I've, I've never really handed any, anything like that. What I do is I take the violation or I note that it's closed.
Okay.
And, and, and it's done, it's finished.
Do they get a copy of that?
If they want a copy, I can give them a copy, yes.
I, I think it might be just, that, I, that's a problem, makes the most sense as anything. I don't want to make, you know, busy work, but maybe, uh, when you do that, just make sure to give that person a copy, then they'd have something for their files in case it came up down the road or something.
Yeah, if, if they, if they want to request a copy of it, I'd be glad to give them a copy.
I'd just give them a copy.
Okay.
Because they may not know that they have a right to request a copy. So, I, I will buy a ream of paper and give it to the city of Marion. If you, if, if, you know, you get, if you're doing it anyway, just take that, make a copy of it, and give it to them.
Okay.
Okay, all right, uh, council, uh, I think unless James, I mean, James indicated that he could always bring it back up if we didn't get it done, but maybe the cleanest way to do this would be give Mr. Wilson, uh, uh, to the May second meeting in May, and, uh, then he can get a piece of paper saying that the, uh, that James writes on saying it's been taken care of, and he can get the very first copy, anyone ever got one of it. Anyone?
Are you looking at the May thirteenth meeting, for it to be completed?
Well, yeah, I don't know the date, would it be May?
Twentieth, actually.
Or would it be the twentieth? Okay.
Yeah, the, give him, to give him a month, give him the second meeting, May twentieth. Is there a motion then to, uh, continue this process, uh, to May twentieth?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Uh, five zero vote, and a positive. Uh, so, Mr. Wilson, we're getting there. I mean, I, I wasn't on the council when this all started, but I was here and saw the picture, whatever, and, you know, there's been dramatic improvement, no doubt about that, but I would agree that, you know, I understand you're doing construction, you're doing construction, but please try to clean it up as much as you can when you get done. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready, we are ready for, um, oh, anything else, James, from you? I noticed that you had a, uh, kind of a report here on, uh, do you want to address that at all?
Uh, that's just the, uh, since the last report that I submitted, um, I try to go by once a month, because that leaves a few days, you know, where I can actually do something done, you know? But, um, I am going to do some training later this week, uh, up in the city of Manhattan with, uh, CASE, which is Kansas Association of Code Enforcement, and with, uh, HOA, which is Heart of America. It's the ICC, they're, uh, basically a bunch of building inspectors, plumbing inspectors, mechanical across the state of Kansas. Um, we're looking at, uh, Wednesday, we're doing, uh, solar systems with battery backups. Uh, I believe Mark Horst with, uh, King Solar is actually the, uh, the teacher on that class. Um, on the second day, we're doing existing buildings, uh, which is the existing building code. So, that's what will be done on the second day, uh, and then third day, I'll probably be with, hang out with the code enforcement officers.
Um, James, what our current, the building code that we have currently in effect in Marion, what year is that?
We're on the two thousand code cycle, uh, with the two thousand eight electrical code, uh, from the NEC, the National Electrical Code. I did some research on, on, you know, because I know that, you know, it would be good for Marion to update their codes. It really would be. Uh, right now, they're twenty-four years old, okay?
Not, nothing's changed in the last twenty-four years?
Um, you know, the nuts and the bolts of it, really hasn't, you know, the basics, uh, not, has not changed, but there are some other things, you know, on the electrical side that has changed. Uh, there's some fire code things that have changed, you know, uh, making safe, structures safer for, for families, uh, making it safer for firefighters to come in and put out a fire, uh, you know, especially when you get into mixed occupancies, like downtown businesses, where they have, uh, a business down below and a family staying upstairs, you know? There's some, there's some big things that have been happening since two thousand on, uh, on that type of stuff. I mentioned, uh, the, uh, the code update, and the question came up about cost, you know, that seems to be the biggest thing everybody's worried about, the cost, you know, to build something to twenty twenty-one building code versus the, uh, two thousand building code. Well, yeah, there might be a little bit, but I did find a study that was put out. I think it was a subsidiary or, or part of ICC, but I'm not one hundred percent sure about that. But they were very thorough and very in-depth, and, and I saved that, and I would like to present that to you all sometime. Basically, it was jumped from two thousand fifteen building code to the twenty twenty-one building code, and they took four different houses, and they applied the, the difference in the costs, you know, to build into code and stuff. And, and I was rather surprised, you know, even took into our account where we lived here in Kansas, okay? Even, you know, Marion had a factor in there, you know, a cost factor, you know, compared to the back of the east coast and the west coast in Florida. And I was rather surprised, you know, I figured it would have been more, but it looked like it, that cost was gonna be about thirty-five hundred dollars to build from two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-one in this area. But I can get that information for you guys, it's a, it's a little brochure.
And that was?
I can email it, too. I think I, I saved it on my computer, too.
That was, uh, building a house from the ground, though?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Uh, and my estimate was probably about a two, two hundred fifty thousand dollar home, um, you know, say, a two-story home, ground level homes. They did four different styles of homes, is what they did, you know?
In one conversation that you and I had, though, didn't you say that a lot of insurance companies will look at a community and, and see how old your regulations are and base kind of a...
Yes, that's correct.
Risk factor to it, so if we got things up, then I guess we would have, everybody in the town would have a better rating for property insurance?
Yes, I think it's a IEC rating is what it is, I don't quote them all one hundred percent on that. I might have the letters wrong there. But, uh, every, every, every town's assigned a, a, a rating, and it's based off your firefighting, you know, your response times, your fire, uh, fire hydrants all around the town and stuff like that. But it also factors in your building code, what cycle, like, you're within the, the current six years of the, uh, building code. And, uh, you get a better insurance rating, and everybody that sells insurance looks for that rate.
Gotcha. Well, we, we really want new people, more people, and we want new housing, and obviously, the, the pushback on the code change would be, well, you're gonna price them out, they won't be able to afford to build a house, but if a, if a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, if it ups the cost of doing that by three grand, hey, three grand, but if I was gonna build a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, I don't think three thousand would keep me from doing it, but...
You're correct.
Last question I have for you is, um, so you've been, how long have you been working with us here, James?
I will have been with, uh, Marion, uh, two years come June twentieth.
And you've been on that day and a half schedule that whole time?
Uh, yeah, day and a half, two days, basi, uh, basically about two days, is what it is.
I, I probably know the answer to this, but you might surprise me, is two days, uh, a week enough for our code needs?
I, not really. Uh, I think that you need more. I mean, I, I got several structures around town right now that I'm not able to get to, you know? I wanted to start up another syst, another line of, uh, dangerous structures like we did here, not to know, Zach, I know you're probably real familiar with what we did there. I got a bunch more that I want to bring in and, and start working on, and, and the follow-ups, the follow-ups, I've got a couple that I still need to follow up on. You know, they got building permits and, and they haven't gone anywhere, you know, they're still like, it was, you know, I need to go back and follow up on them.
In, in Harrington, um, and I, I really don't have anything to compare it to, because you work in Harrington, and you're the only code guy I know, so I'm gonna ask you, what do they do on their, on their zoning stuff?
On their zoning?
Yeah.
Uh, so, I help out a lot with the zoning up there. Okay, um, I did all the zoning in Council Grove, when I was over at Council Grove. I was over there for six years, and I did all the zoning over there, you know, set up the meetings, you know, kept them in, it's that type of stuff. Just basically what Marco's doing right now, you know? And in Harrington, I'm not as involved in the zoning, but it all seems to land in my office. Conditional use permits and, and, uh, and right now, we're working on rezoning, you know, we had to rezone some, it was industrial, and someone has a house on the property, and, and it's like, well, that needs rezoned, so the bank did not, bank didn't want to, you know? So, you know, I'm working on rezoning on there, you know, but the conditional use permits, variances, they all seem to land in my office.
I was just, we had him here, so I wanted to ask a question, does anybody else have anything? All right, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think we jumped number eleven a little bit ago.
Oh, I skipped right over it. Go, you wanna, we'll go back, thank you, Mark, go back to eleven, the purchasing limit policy.
Right, uh, yes, we've had a discussion on the ten thousand dollars, where that number came from and things. I might know, we just, for a little broader background, we've, uh, I did, you know, made four or five phone, phone calls, see how their cities handle it. I think every town could have what's unique to their town. I think the people I call with five to twenty-five thousand dollars. That doesn't include, you have emergency purchases, and it seemed like the rest of your purchasing policy was pretty clear, and maybe to clean that up, so we're all on the same page. We make it, we put a number in there for anything by capital, uh, budgeted or non-budgeted, we can talk about that, but, uh, over a certain amount. I would say if, if ten was a number, uh, with COVID, I'd probably jump into twenty, twenty-five, anything that or that amount, just because everything gone up so much.
Well, and what, what's in there, what said that had to be brought to the city administrator, and I, you and I talked about this, so...
Right, right.
I think you're in agreement that it would be that the city administrator would then bring it before the council.
Yes, yes. And there's also a section in it, only because I used to do CDBG quite a bit, there's CDBG rules. So, there was a section in there, they require that if you get a grant over the year, to have that in your, to, to meet their federal guidelines. So, like I said, every town's unique to have a, a nuance to their town, and then you have your regular purchasing chemicals, and if you buy so much. I, both towns have the normal routine things, you, you have to have it, when you need chemical, you need chemical.
So, would we be like a three tier, you'd have like a department head at a level, a city administrator at a level, and then above that comes back to council? Is that the way you were thinking, or?
You asking me?
I'm just throwing it out there.
That's how some, some people have a limit for each category.
Gotcha.
Well, and, and we've got, kind of have that. What we don't have, that I, as far as I read the, the policy, is that we don't have, uh, anything that says if you get to a certain level, it has to come back to the council. Uh, the, the administrator, you know, and that's what I think Mark is saying, is that at twenty-five thousand, anything below that, our current rules would apply to, but if it's a budgeted item, it's above twenty-five thousand or above, has to come back in, and basically, it's, council would rebless it, or if something had changed, could say, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna buy that.
So, budgeted or non-budgeted, if it gets above that level, then it would come back to the council?
I think non-budgeted would have to come back in.
For sure, gotcha, okay, okay.
So, that, that's a discussion item, and, um, I want to have the council make a decision on that in two weeks, unless someone, you know, I guess if we decide we're not making a decision, we can, but...
No, I think that sounds good, yeah. Bring it up in two weeks.
Yeah, I agree.
Come up another...
Thanks for not letting me skip over that, Mark. Um, and we're ready for, uh, counselor, department, and staff reports, and so let's start, um, where's the microphone? Margot? Margot, if you can't figure out how to turn the thing on, you're not gonna be our next IT director.
That's good for everybody. Um, I'm really pleased and excited today, they've started on the duplexes, so, that's exciting. The other thing, uh, we will be publicizing a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the solar field property, uh, in the May first, uh, edition of the record, and that will be a public hearing at our May Planning Commission meeting on May twenty-eighth. So, we'll be, we'll be taking care of that, so...
By the way, I, I talked to, uh, the superintendent and told Tim that, uh, the Power Pool had, uh, offered to work with the school for like, the school educational things and trips and whatever, with regard to solar, and he was very interested in that. So, as we move along, I'm gonna try to put those two together.
Good deal.
So, it's your job to, not let me forget, Margot.
Okay, that I can do, I can do this, that I can do. There's posting notes for that.
Zach?
Nothing from the police department.
We've heard nothing from James.
I have nothing in the electrical department.
Things going okay?
Yeah.
Why were you checking my meter today? Well, it wasn't my electric meter.
No, it was a water meter. We gotta do that once a month.
The...
So, we don't ping rights, we have to re...
Well, I know that, but I, I didn't expect the, the chief of electricity to be...
Uh, we get to do a little everything here.
Okay, fair enough.
I know there was an issue with getting the proper meters in to fix a lot of them that were bad. Have those come in, I saw, um, I don't know on that. The new meters, they finally get the right size in?
We have stacked papers like this to get the meter changed.
About it, I know we were having trouble getting the meters and getting the right meters in, I didn't know if the meters had ever came in.
Yeah, we got the right meters in.
Good.
So, does that mean that, that we're not gonna have that problem with the water meters that we've been experiencing, where they're, they're supposed to automatically report, but they don't?
Uh, I, I think most of them still do. Uh, I know Tim has been working really hard on trying to get that system figured out, whether we need to upgrade, the price of all that, whatnot.
When, when you look across the industry, it doesn't matter, there's...
Microphone, sir.
When you look across the industry...
No, I'm sure, I'm dead sure, Darren.
When you look across the industry, there's a certain percentage of meters that always don't work right. Uh, it's just, some, I like to say it's under ten percent, but, you know, that's what the industry will try to tell you, but every town we work with, it seems like you're constantly at the fifteen, twenty percent that don't report correctly every month. It's unfortunate, it's an unfortunate fact of technology, and it could be a number of little things that are going wrong with either the meter, or the transducer, the reading software, the reading equipment, I mean, there's just any little thing.
Just so we don't, there's no confusion, it's not that we can't read the meter, it's that when we go by and it's supposed to electronically report, it doesn't do that correctly.
And there's a number of reasons why that's not happening, and that's what, that's what those percentages I was talking about. It'd be, in a perfect world, yeah, we're picking up ninety-eight plus, but in the real world, you talk to any town that has that system, it, you're... it, you're probably sometimes lucky to hit seventy-five, eighty percent correct reads every month, it's just.
Well, my concern is that, a- and I could, my information could be wrong, but I've gotten this pretty consistently from city staff, that we have a large number of ours, maybe a quarter or more, that aren't, uh, reporting correctly. And so we've been billing at the minimum and that would include Mr. Boxa over here, and he's got twelve kids. And I, I.
His vision is really bad.
Well, but he's got a, a family and several children and I know they're using more than the minimum. Uh, and so we need to, if, if we have to go start reading the meters manually, then we gotta start reading.
Will those, when they are updated, will there be then a, a current reading and then you just have to make up for the?
It's, it's a KDHE rule, anytime we swap out a meter, whether it was on a project or whether the city staff's going out to do it, we have to take a final meter reading on the reading, the meter they're taking out. And they have to record the z- whatever the meter reads at the time, most of the time a new one says zero, but it could be up a few if they tested them prior. So those, those meetings have to be recorded on a slip that then Becky keeps here at City Hall.
Cause I didn't know if people will be, uh.
That's KDHE rule.
Have a shock when they get their final water bill that have, really haven't had a reading for months of, you know? If that'll come across then as a.
Well, i- if you, if the meter still isn't, if the meter still isn't reading correctly.
You can't manually read it either then?
No, you can.
But I didn't know if there's a manual reading and if it's corrected from when it quit taking a reading to your current reading and you see you'd have a huge amount of water usage if you're liable for that amount of water. That's my question, I'm trying to get answered, so.
There, there could be, and that's just something in the past, and like, when that happened during the water project switch out on some of the ones we came across. And we worked it here internally with City Hall and instead of getting hit all in one month, we proportioned that out over several months if we saw a huge difference. So we'll almost have to, just, I guess, Landon or T- Tim, uh, you know, whoever, huh, on the water side, when we get ready to turn those in, we'll just have to take a look and just, and talk to Becky about how they wanna do that.
It's not a huge shock to people when they realize.
I, I agree, that you don't wanna get one of those, right?
They didn't realize what was going on, so.
Right.
How, how did they?
Cause it's not their fault, I mean, so, sorry, Kevin.
No, that's fine, how do you tell if they're not rea- I mean, is it just the fact that they don't communicate or they can, when they do, they always get the right amount of gallons used or is it?
Once again, it's a variety of answers to that question.
Gotcha.
But if, in the case that the judge used, the, the sixteen people at the Boxa household that are, you know, uh, sorry, I'm, my business is worse than hits.
That's okay, I can take it.
Oh, no, uh, it, it's just a matter of if all of a sudden you're seeing that one meter, you know, several months in a row, not, either not getting a reading or getting a very low reading, but you know there's a higher usage, then you better start, you need to manually check it and see if there's a problem. And at that point, you can tell what's the problem with the meter itself, the sender.
Gotcha.
Are these checked by, this is probably a silly question, but do you drive down the street and they can read it from the vehicle? Was it more accurate when, when people actually walk to each meter and, you know, back in the day?
With a little, with a little note pad?
It's, that's, that's, that's a, that's a yes and no question.
Yeah.
Because there's, if the meter is having a problem, it doesn't matter if you're looking at it or if you're reading it electronically, if it's the problems in the meter, there's still gonna be a problem.
Right.
If the, if the problem's in the sender or in the receiver in the truck or something blocking that signal, then the answer's yes, it would be more accurate to read it in person. Um, when, when we were reading in person, I don't remember exactly for Marion, that'd be a question for past city staff that used to do it the old way, but you basically had one person that probably took about fifteen days out of the month to go around and read every meter. So, you know, it's hiring one more person to just physically go do that, that's about all they did. They'd help out with other stuff too, but, you know, it wasn't.
Right, right.
There's also technology, you know, some towns, I think Lawrence did it, but they can just, it's all new, they can hit a button and down reach it straight to the computer somehow, I don't know how it works, but.
Yeah, you have to have, you have to have good five G service to do that.
Correct, correct, correct.
We're gonna get it.
And there's probably errors doing that as well, so.
There always is, once again, if the meter's having problems or the sender's having problems, it, it's still gonna be a r- error, no matter what the case is. So that's why I'm saying that industry standard percentage, it's always gonna be wrong every month.
Right.
There's a variety of things that could be causing that.
Right.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, Darren, you need to run for office, you didn't give us a straight answer to a single thing at all.
I learned from you, Jeff.
Um, okay, then let's go to, uh, Ja- oh, Janet?
Go ahead, Janet.
Mark?
I'd have a couple of things, uh, we received a request from Wichita Engineering Firm to install some monitoring wells on the, a highway coming through town. This is pretty routine, I don't know how you do it here in Porie, we did all-time engineering, just handled it. Uh, it's a, they just monitored it around different places in town, they'd be behind the curve and they wouldn't start traffic. So you might see somebody out towards the Casey subway, out toward that area, uh, so we'll fill out the form.
Well, just excuse my ignorance, but monitoring, what?
Oh, it could be anything, it could be, uh, petroleum products, it could be dry cleaning solutions, it could be anything. They, in Porie, we had them all over, just, you know, they get a read, we had them around our solid waste, uh, facility. You just get a read, you have a baseline, so you, you, it's kind of a.
And you're talking in groundwater or just in the ground?
Oh, it could be anything.
Okay.
It, it, it's a KDHE.
Yes.
Requirement, they're the ones that are having them installed and they pick the locations.
Yeah.
And it's just a four-inch PVC pipe that's shot down into the ground so many feet below where they find water table. And depending on what they find, they come back at some interval that they determine based on what they find in the water quality and retest it. So that, that's what they're for. And there's a variety of reasons why they might pick a town or a location to put monitoring wells in. Usually that means something has happened in the past at a nearby location that would have sparked some kind of need for the testing.
Okay. Okay, uh, another item, we're, uh, looking at potential CDVG applications, I think they're due September thirtieth. Uh, you have to be a fifty-one percent qual- qualify LMI, Marion's at forty-six percent, so we might have to, I'm talking to Ranshing Company about, uh, you know, doing a survey to get over that hump. You can apply up to six hundred fifty thousand dollars, you, you do need a twenty-five percent match, but you can do parks. Uh, but we used to do water and sewer, they've kind of changed the categories, you have to be under consent order to apply in those areas. But there are some, you can do, a lot of towns have done parks and things like that, so we're, I would talk to, uh, at a meeting, McPherson on Wednesday. Uh, I'll talk to Rosemary Saunders over there and just kind of get an idea and report back on it.
And once again, showing my ignorance, I'm assuming LMI is low in monitoring.
Low monitoring, yeah, the state has every town, I checked today and, and you're forty-five point nine six percent or something. There are a lot of towns, I, I know one town south of, of Porie that was in the, say, high thirties, they surveyed and they qualified. Their goal is, there's, you, you put you into some competitive money, you can, you can do some nice things. And the final thing is, uh, we need to put on your, uh, May, uh, uh, the trail grant that you talked about at one time, when, it'd be on your next, uh, meeting. Uh, we need to maybe get some clarification on that, get some more information, talk to the county about some partnerships, support letters and things like that. Uh, I think it's due May seventeenth, and I know last time we had, earlier this year, you had a concept thought process, now we need to start putting something together. You'd approve a resolution at your meet, first meeting in May, and Darren's here for a little more on the particulars, which I appreciate.
Uh, I'll jump back real quick to the LMI question. Um, on LMI, um, that number actually is derived now, the last couple of times, from census data. So that's where they get the income pieces off census data, census data, they used to do a big statewide survey that was independent. Well, they decided that was not used since the census was already collecting that type of information, so that's where they get it. And yes, you can actually target surveys, so if it's determined that it's not a whole city public function, like when we used to do water and sewer projects, if it was one spot in town, I'm going back, going back to when we did Jex Edition, that was a CDVG project and because that LMI went way over down in that particular area, we were able to get that, the grant money through that program because we target, uh, survey just the area that was gonna get the improvements. So with a park or something like that, you won't get that benefit, but just so you know how LMI has derived the original number. Um, so on the TA grant Mark mentioned, uh, we did get, you know, the concept paper, you guys approved that, we turned that in, we did get the go-ahead from KDOT to sub- to submit the actual grant. That actual grant is due May seventeenth, that gives us five weeks. Um, I guess I need direction to make sure, number one, you want to keep doing it. And also, we, we turned in the possibility of three routes, you know, that's what we thought, might be, you know, available routes, and I know a little bit of that was derived with, with, uh, what was the committee, I guess, you know, type thing. Um, if you tell me to proceed, my goal would be to get with Mark and possibly go to the county next week, next, uh, if there's, there's a meeting and see if there's support from their side to co-sponsor this application. It would help with the, um, uh, scoring matrix to have two public entities, especially where you're connecting as city and county function. You know, that would look really good on the application. Uh, right now, we've driven the routes a couple more times and looked at landowner issues. The stumbling block, I'm gonna say right now is no matter which route we pick, we're anywhere from four to eight landowners that we'd have to have agreements with. And that's gonna be the big stumbling block as far as timing, because when we actually turn in that grant application, we need some kind of commitment. If you don't already have an easement with that landowner, some kind of commitment from landowners that they would be willing to enter into an easement. So five weeks seems like a long time, but if you start dealing with eight property owners, that could get tricky. So if this is truly something you want us to help you proceed with this application at this time, um, I, I need to know so we can try to get a jump on this. And the, the resolution you talked about, it's just a support resolution, uh, passed by the city and we requested the county to do the same thing if they were willing to co-sponsor this. Co-sponsoring doesn't necessarily mean that they would have to kick in funding because we're actually trying to come up with some creative ways, uh, maybe to have them, we can't use working kind on this grant program, but there's other ways to supply materials. So there's, might be something that the county can help out with that wouldn't cost them, you know, a huge amount and keep your share down also by them supplying some materials, so we're trying to come up with some creative ways on that.
Can you remind me, how long was the trail going to be?
Depends on the route. Let's just say, let's just say you pick the one route, the, the first one that pops into my head, it'd be right down the edge of two, well, not edge, but along two fifty-six corridor.
Uh-huh.
And then down upland, so if you go that route, you're looking at three miles? Is that right? It's a mile and a half down upland to where you connect to the County Lake Road. And I think it's a mile and a half back to Eisenhower. So roughly a three mile. And no matter which route we take, it's in that same ballpark.
Okay.
You know, somewhere between, probably the shortest route is maybe two and a half to four at the longest.
That's a, that's an eighty-twenty grant, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, eighty-twenty.
And then as far as the twenty percent that we would be on the hook for, what, like what's, can you go through a little bit of the timeline of like, okay, right, if we apply for the grant, what budget year are we looking at that twenty percent needing to apply?
A long timeout, in a way, I say that is, the, so this, this particular grant, unlike, say, the cost share that you, you know, we're currently working on, with the cost share grant, you guys pay for all the design, all the inspection, and we bid it out from here locally. With this particular TA grant, because it's a federal program, the feds make KDOT go through the KDOT system. So you actually can, the part of the twenty for eighty-twenty split is actually all the design costs and all the inspection costs fall under the program. But now you have to go through all of KDOT processes. To go through a KDOT design process from start to finish takes about eighteen months. So this thing wouldn't even bid for eighteen months after they made announcements at least. So, you know, we're talking, let's just say they made announcements in August, it usually takes about three months on these to make announcements. If we're, if we're looking at August, you're not even looking at a bid until January of twenty-six. So you could very well be into your twenty-six budget. And, and, and they don't require anything from the local until you get ready to bid it. That's when they start asking for your portion of the funds. Now, but with design now being able to be included, you might have to pay a little bit more upfront, like the twenty percent of the design cost upfront. But as far as the construction money, yeah, you don't have to supply that construction money until the bid is accepted by KDOT and they ask you for your acceptance. That's when it lasts for your twenty percent on construction.
Are we, I know nothing about what it costs to build a trail and I assume it's different whether you're, if you're putting in something that's asphalt versus something that's gravel or whatever.
And, and this would be a rock gravel type structure.
But are we talking twenty percent of a hundred thousand dollars or twenty percent of a million dollars?
Give me just a second and I'll look up what we turned in. I had a different sheet pulled up, so I don't have that one up yet, just sitting here. We turned in, total estimated construction cost was four hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred. So using that number, you're looking at nine, a little under ninety-five for the twenty percent.
And what you're asking for right now, Darren, if I'm reading you right, is just some idea whether we're really serious about doing this?
I need to know if you're serious so I can start going and making some of these contacts on your behalf to see if we can't get some of these letters of support. Because if we don't have some of that lined up and we turn in the application, it's gonna get immediately rejected. Uh, that's just, that's just what's gonna happen. If, if you just turn this thing in and say, yeah, yeah, we're just gonna go down county right away or city and county right away and we know, although it's too narrow to do that with keeping the road out there in the ditches, they're just gonna take a look at it and go. You might have been serious, but you, you, you don't have stuff, enough stuff lined up to proceed.
Got a, a biker here and a biker there, what do you guys think?
I mean, I, I like the idea of being able to connect the lake and town, I think, I've heard from people at the lake that, that, um, it's something that they would like to have too, I think, and then when you think about people in the summer with the camping and stuff that goes on out there, to me, it can only be a benefit, um, but ninety-five thousand dollars, it's no small amount of cash.
Yeah, it's kind of the same way I feel, um, I think it's definitely a benefit, but cause that's how much that we wanna spend on that.
And what, what about the upkeep of it? You know, what, what will be the cost of the upkeep and, and who's gonna be maintaining that trail and?
It'll have to be city, I mean, well, city and or county, depending on how an agreement can be reached between the two entities. But whoever the sponsor is, when you sign the grant agreement, you, you were signing up to maintain that trail for, I think, a minimum of ten years. I'd, I'd have to look back, it depends on the agreement, but that's what most of them are, at least ten years. And in a rock trail like that, a lot of it's just go spray the weeds, I mean, that, that's, that's the basic. Just to keep the weeds out of it.
Yeah.
If we were able to partner with the county, um, and you, they said it couldn't be, you know, hey, pony up, but they could provide, help us out with some materials, whatever. Best guess, you know, if they were to do it, are we talking, we'd get, be able to knock maybe ten thousand off of that or what, what do you think?
I, I would hope, one of the things we were kind of sitting around the office brainstorming is off of past county projects, there is a large pile just north of Lincolnville of a mixture of old asphalt and soil that we pulled off of certain roads as we rebuild them. And we really can't use it for a lot else, but we could use it for a subbase for this type of thing. Because it has just enough asphalt in it that it's gonna give stability for a hike and bike pedestrian trail. So that's an option that we could, now even though it's a KDOT project, because it's a trail, they'll let us supply some of our own material. Now, we wouldn't wanna use it as the surface material, but we could sure use it and then just put like a two-inch surface on top of that. So that's an option and that would save a fair amount of funds. Uh, I don't have an exact number, you're gonna have to run the OPC again, but, you know, it'd save some money to use something like that as a subbase versus just more rock, so.
But at this point, if we decide to go forward, I mean, we're under no obligation or there's no cost?
You are under no obligation until you get awarded the grant and you sign the grant agreement.
And in a conversation that you and I had, like for you to do all that and apply for that, there's no cost to the. And in a conversation that you and I had, like for you to do all that and apply for that, there's no cost to the city, correct?
At this time, no. No.
Thank you.
Because of all the other projects we're involved with you on, we, we will handle this type of grant application for you at no cost to you.
Okay, thank you.
Darren, can you care with another grant?
It depends.
It depends. Unfortunately, I'm full of these, as Judge says, I'm politically staying neutral on a lot of things. It depends on the other grant and depends on the funds. In other words, can you use another grant to pony up part of your twenty percent match? No, because KDOT's going to require cash. Could we use another grant to pay for something along the way so it doesn't have to be included in the KDOT project? Yes. So that's why I'm saying yes or no. It just depends on what other grant program you're talking about and what it can actually do for the project. You like my yes or no answers, don't you?
I'd rather.
My, my personal feeling, I, I just, I see so many young people biking and old people biking anymore. And we've, I, that lake, I think is, I, we haven't tapped the benefit of having that lake set right there like we should be as a city. Anything we can do that links the two, that brings people out there in here. If we could get to the point where they could ride their bikes in here and we've got a place, you know, that they go and they have an ice cream cone and whatever, that sort of thing, I just see a real benefit to the city from that. I, I am, that's a lot of money, but I hate to say no at this point. And I also don't want to send Darren on a wild goose chase because I don't want to, you know, kill the goose that ate the golden egg. Or wait a minute, I got that wrong. Lay, laid the golden, laid the golden egg or ate it. I don't care. I don't want to kill it. So my inclination is to just say, you know, we don't, we've already, the previous council already started this move and I don't want to quit, but I'll, I'm not going to fight anybody over it if you think we should.
I mean, our, our hands aren't tied behind our backs right now. So I mean, we have that option to, you know, go forward without any.
Right. And, and this is a every two-year grant program right now. It's based on the federal funding, but that's what KDOT decided to do probably eight to ten years ago. It used to be every year, but due to the size of grants they were awarding, they always seem short on funds, so they went to an every other year program. There's no guarantee. It's going to be back in two years, but that's the plan.
We also have, I mean, based on the timeframe, it's not like we're trying to come up with that money tomorrow or even this year.
I, I think that we owe it to Darren though, if, if, we're, we're not pledging or committing to anything, but I think that if we're not serious about it, we should tell him we're not serious about it.
I think the biggest stumbling block, I mean, we do a lot of these grant applications for a lot of communities. This time around, maybe on this TA, it's maybe only, you know, half a dozen around here that I'm working on. But the biggest hiccup I see with this particular one is that landowner coordination. There's just so many of them and if one of the dominoes wouldn't happen to fall, now all of a sudden, maybe that route is scrubbed. And so you're, and so if we don't get a commitment from all eight on the one route or all four on the other route, you know, it's, it's going to be tough to sell to KDOT that we actually have a viable project. Cause they don't want to dump money into something that is going to get changed, you know, during design or construction.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to bring this to an end. At this point in time, if I were in a position of voting, I would want Darren to proceed ahead. How about you, Amy?
I would agree with that.
That?
Proceed.
Tim?
Yeah.
Is that good enough for you?
Good enough for me. It's your decision. I'm just the little gopher guy.
Well, I mean, we've already, the council's already.
Well, I know, I know. That's why I'm just, I'm just saying I, I want to make sure that you understand some of the hiccups we're going to maybe run into. If I can't get any, okay, I honestly, I might come back to you on the sixth and say, I got, I don't have a single landowner that's willing to work with us and we might be scrapped. Just because we don't have a route to get from point A to point B.
Well, we need you to be willing to do what you just did because we don't want to, you know, overload you or, or go to the well once too often. Well, then that's on you because you're still here. So no, just be honest with us and we'll see where we go.
And that's exactly why I wanted to come. And that way also you, as your governing body, kind of gave Mark and I the go-ahead to go meet with the county to see what could happen there. We didn't want to, you know, blindside you with that meeting either. Cause we haven't, we don't even have that meeting set up yet. But we wanted to confirm with you that it was a go before we went and set that meeting up.
I think you've got the, I got it, you've got our blessing.
We'll never get it if we don't ask for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Not mine. I'm holding mine back, but the group collectively is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
Then I want to make sure when they go back out to reach, to check that meter, they just shut it off.
All right, we'll start at your end of the table this, this time. Tim?
The only thing I had, I talked about was, two meetings back, I brought up about investigating fiber in the community. And I think I'd mentioned that there was no fiber at all and I wasn't really, I was not correct on that. There is a small amount of fiber that my vibe has, comes down Main Street to some of the businesses. Just want to clarify on that. But outside of that, that's really it. It's available to anyone else in the community. So we're still just investigating some options of what it would look like to offer, to see what even is available to bring in for improved internet through fiber. So that's all that I had to talk about.
Kevin?
I don't have anything.
I, I don't have anything tonight either. So we'll just keep rolling.
The only thing that I had was, we have that work session set up for the twenty-ninth, I think. We got a notification, not a notification, I got a flyer the other day from school that the kindergarten through second grade, spring concert or whatever they call it is, is that night, which I think affects probably three of us.
Yeah.
Unless Tim's not planning on going to that.
I don't think I have much of choice.
How about?
Cause it's at seven, I think it's at seven.
I don't, I, I don't know what time it is. The flyer came home and it does not have a timer.
Yeah, it's always seven.
Yeah, seven, okay. Um, how about Mark and I talk and we'll shoot some dates out to everyone and pick a different date. I don't want to fight against a kid program.
My daughter appreciates that.
Okay, to you, Pam.
I was just going to update and say that I talked to Lloyd and he's kind of brainstorming ways that we can safely, maybe present questions for people that aren't able to be here, just in a way so that we don't have individuals just responding and, and recruit comment, so.
Good, excellent.
Yeah.
Anything else that come up from anyone? Okay. Public forum, anyone have anything to say? Very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn this meeting.
Is it second?
I'll second.
Home favor, I?
Aye.
Posnay, we are adjourned.